All right, we will go ahead and call the October meeting of the Bartholomew County Council. Meeting to order, we will start with the invocation and pledge with George Morales.
Dear heavenly Father, we glorify you and praise your name as we got gathered here today. We ask that the word of this meeting be a vessel for us to serve the members of our community and you in setting a fiscal responsible foundation for our county. We offer up our prayers to those in need, grant our leaders the wisdom to protect and promote your liberties. Bless our Bartholomew County Council as they guide your flock with their loving guidance, humility, and charity. Please touch our hearts with your wisdom so that our decisions humbly reflect your love as we leave here, knowing that with you, we can make a difference. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, George. We'll now entertain approval of the September meeting. I know we got some corrections in the email. I believe Brady got all of those updated. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Marcus moved and Mark has seconded. Is there any discussion? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same as sign? Motion passes. All right, moving on to...
Marcus is online, and so let's make sure that we record.
His vote, his thumbs up.
Big thumbs up. Thank you, Marcus.
Perfect, thank you. All right, additional appropriation. Todd, we'll start with you.
We are asking for an additional appropriation out of our forty-nine thirty-eight counts of self-tower fund. We have the money in there. As you are aware, we had to replace a generator at the nine-one-one center. And so that's what that money will be for. Just one change, instead of a hundred and thirty thousand, I have got all the bills in now. I only need a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to pay those bills.
Perfect. Any questions?
One thou- one, one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions for not Todd on this? Greg has moved, Kim has seconded. Any other discussion? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
When we vote?
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye or thumbs up if you're on Zoom. He frozen? He's frozen. Okay. Yeah. All right, motion passes. Thank you, Todd. Commissioners, and I think they talked to us at work line, work session, but Tony, do you want to talk to your two-hundred-thousand request?
I can, yes, thank you. The commissioners are asking for an additional appropriation for two-hundred thousand dollars. As we spoke about in your work session last week, this is in reference to an ongoing lawsuit that we're dealing with in the county with regard to biosolids. We will run out of our consultant fund money. Well, I think we only have maybe four thousand left, and we'll probably spend all of this by the end of the year or very close to it. As I said in your work session, we can't go into too many details because it's a pending lawsuit, but it is important to the county that we continue this. And it's with that and also with the regard to the IRS questions stemming from several years ago, where we're trying, working to get the penalties waived. And I think we're moving in the right direction on that. But those two particular things where we're outsourcing some legal support, we need some additional funds for.
Any follow-up questions for Tony?
I think Tony, the only thing, I think at the work session you mentioned for the bio was a hundred and forty thousand sixty for the other, but you're asking for a total.
No, we, no, we didn't say that. We anticipate the bulk of, the vast majority of it will go to the biosolids. The, we didn't have it broken down like that, but we've already spent about a hundred thousand dollars on the biosolids lawsuit. We anticipate that will probably go over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand before it's over.
Madam President, if there are any other questions, I'm open to allocate two-hundred thousand dollars to the commissioners for, to the county general for consulting fees.
Right, George has moved and Mark has seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, I see your thumb.
Thank you.
You. All right, moving on to miscellaneous business. I see Major Marcus is here with the commissary expense.
So just wanted to get approval from the council for commissary purchases. Basically, just to be transparent, because the, the amount roughly comes out to like ninety-four thousand. The number one item would be the large drone. It's capable of carrying a life vest out the river, to the middle lake, plus numerous other things that it can do. And the, the other items are four smaller drones. Basically do the same thing, but it won't carry a payload like the big one. But this is over the next, want to say, you know, six months to a year, then purchase small. But the big drone would be immediately.
Perfect. And do you have enough money in the commissary to cover all of this? We don't need any formal approval, right?
Well, it's kind of an approval just because of transparency. It falls under the statute, I would say under equipment, but, you know, there's a thing in here says vehicle, but if you look up definition of vehicle to transport a person or, or payload or, or like a large quantity of something, it's basically a helicopter without a bi.
All right, George has moved to approve these.
The large drone is fifty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The other four come out to a total of thirty, thirty-seven thousand six hundred.
All right, George has moved, Greg has seconded. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same as sign? Yep, I got Marcus's thumbs up. Motion passes. Thank you, Major. All right, now we have budget readings. Pia, do you want me to just go down the list? You have an order? Work for you? We'll start with Lisa Moore with Flat Rock Township.
She is not online. And you're basically, you're just, how did you say that earlier? Is it?
Because she doesn't have a full...
Yeah, it's not a, but you're not actually approving her budget, you're just acknowledging that she...
Has submitted it.
Explained what her increases were.
Madam President, I move to acknowledge the fact that the Flat Rock Rock Creek budget was permitted to the council and we're in agreement with.
She submitted it for non-binding review.
Non-binding review, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, George has moved to acknowledge the non-binding budget. Mike has seconded. Any questions on the Flat Rock Township budget? Saying none, all those in favor of approving signify by saying aye or a thumbs up? Aye? And a thumbs up? All those opposed, same as sign? Motion passes. All right, Heather, solid waste.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
There are no major changes from first reading to second reading, but I will shortly walk you through. So the once part of the budget does include the same salary and wages increase at the county, as well you have our salary resolution for signature. And that part of the budget is one million three hundred and ninety-three thousand two eighty. Number, the number twos just have a slight increase for a few accounting updates, a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred. What the three section of the budget includes an out-of-county and CPI increase at the landfill for a total of two million eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand three oh six. And in the fours, we have no major work at the landfill next year, but we are purchasing a new track loader. That's nine hundred and ninety-one thousand five seventy-five. And that makes our budget overall five million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine sixty-one. And you should have our Form Four along with the salary resolution for signature. That's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Looks good. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve? George moved, Mark second. All those in favor signify by saying aye or thumbs up? Aye. Aye? All those opposed, same as sign? Budget passes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Pia.
Thank you. So I believe Dealeen sent you all the budget adjustments after the first reading.
Yes.
And while there are several bullet points, the true net change was eighteen dollars.
Wow, we, look at that.
So, um, basically, there were some, so the eighteen dollars was all a rounding issue with the way that we calculated payroll and the courts and the way the courts calculated it, and it's eighteen dollars. All right, we'll take their rounding fine. Then, yeah, another change that netted, it was just between line items, was an increase in the clerk's office for postage by forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And it decreased up like everybody else in the courthouse by smaller amounts that totaled to that. They're changing the way they're doing postage, so it's all going to be paid for in the clerk's budget, not by individual officer.
Beautiful.
So it's going to be easier that way.
Beautiful.
Um, another thing was, and I, we talked about this at the work session, Judge Roney talked about the Superior Court change to decrease a public defender fund and increase County General Superior Court two. That's fine also. And then we did, and it'll look like it was a difference. We, because of the way that we budget the lit correctional facility, we budget all the jail expenses for lit correctional facility. But then part of that, oh, we know will not be able to be generated, revenue won't, will not be able to be generated in that fund. So then we have to budget the difference in general fund. So we essentially had a one-point-eight million that was, that, it, it appeared as if it was budgeted twice. It really wasn't. So we took that out of the lit correctional facility fund, and we increased the County General by that same amount. So in total, it looks like you, in total, in total, your numbers are different, but it didn't really change.
How much? How much over are we from the income that we're getting? How much are we funding?
In general fund for the jail, one million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars. And we plan on paying group insurance, food, and medical services in the general fund for those items at the jail. So with those changes, you have a list also of your second reading that shows all County General, thirty-eight million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. All other funds, twenty-nine million three hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. For a total twenty-twenty-six budget of sixty-eight million two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and four. You also should have a copy of the Form Four that shows the adopted budget. Oh, you didn't, you didn't give them all?
It's in our folder.
It's in your folder.
The salary ordinance, that one, yep.
Mark, do you want to ask?
And should, but was this in that folder?
Are you going to ask the question, Pia? On, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
No, what were you gonna?
No.
What was Form Four?
Uh, Form Four is what we have to submit. You have to sign. It's really the ordinance resolution.
Okay.
Uh, it's State Board of Accounts, Form Four, that we then have to upload into Gateway within five days of this meeting.
Okay. Now, we have one thing we need to probably, no, we have to address today, and that's with our health fund. So court services was short, uh, in their budget for healthcare. So we put that over in the commissioners' budget. It's going to decrease the health fund by about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we need to find four-hundred-and-fifty thousand if we want to keep the health fund at Dun &amp; Associates whole. So that is one thing we need to address. Tony, I see you come off mute if there's anything you want to add, or if I got that number wrong.
No, that's the number. We noticed that when that was put into the trust without the funding added to it, that's going to result in approximately about a four-hundred-and-fifty thousand reduction in our reserves next year. Our reserves currently sits right about five million, which is what, you know, the council and the commissioners all agreed on, that they tried to get to a while back. We're currently at that. We would just recommend that you fund that community corrections through a general fund and not reduce our reserves. I don't think this is a good time, and, and not, not just me, but the whole commissioner's office doesn't think this is a good time to be reducing our reserves with the cost of things, particularly pharmacy going sky high. We're going to, we're going to need those reserves down the road, and it doesn't seem like this would be the right time. I would request that, that you guys do fund that four-hundred-and-fifty thousand through the general fund and not take it out of our reserves.
Mark and I were both in the council when we funded that reserve for the healthcare. We set it up at five million dollars. I think that we need to maintain that amount. Therefore, I was originally under the impression that we were funding less than five people in, in the correctional department. I checked back the minutes, and somehow it said in the minute that we were funding twenty-some people, which amounts to the four-hundred thousand plus funding. So I, I support funding that at this point in time, however, with the understanding and condition that any job that is open now and will be open next year in the correctional department, it is not filled. And in twenty-twenty-four budget, the correctional department needs to have the whole amount to be able to fund all their people. Saying two things.
Yep, I hear you. The one thing where, as I'm thinking through this, we just literally, was it at the work session? Talked about not making them? Have a freeze. So we're reversing what we decided last week.
I think we need to look at it two ways. I agree with what George said, because eleven years ago, we were sitting in a deficit in our health trust fund. And, and I don't know if Tony, you were around or even listened, and I think we set the goal for the five million to keep it healthy to that point. And I know the last two years that started a few years back, funding some of Brad's people with their health issues. I don't have, I'm, I'm supportive of next year during the budget process, we talked about funding it. I know it's been an issue now at eleven thou' hour, not funded out of the trust. And we have a couple of options we can look at. We can do an, an additional without upsetting the current budget process. I assume that's correct. We can do additional at the first of the year to fund this, either out of the general or we've got a healthy surplus in our Riverboat money, which is probably around eight hundred thousand and some change the last I looked. So we got a couple of options of funding it. I, I concur, and I spoke to Brad this morning too, to update the rest of the council, because I knew this would be an issue, that ultimately, we've been watching the money, and it was going into that. We're fully aware of the health trust fund, trying to keep it in a healthy level that come next year, after Senate Bill One, and we, we've got all these other issues that we're going to be facing then. This may be the last time that we can fund that, that they'll, they'll need to find some alternative methods of funding that. If not, they will have to explain to us, understanding there's a ripple effect then. We shut down community corrections, and I know what will happen to the sheriff there. There'll be thirty, forty different inmates, and it's, it's a ripple effect to the rest of other people's budgets. So I think until we get on firmer ground next year, knowing how all these other budgets are going to be affected, I'm fine with funding that. I just need to figure out the proper method of getting done for twenty-twenty-six, because we're going to have a lot of obstacles in twenty-seven, and they're definitely on notice that this is on our radar because of that.
Can we require them to put that as a line item on their budget next year so that we know what their full budget is and so that it's not coming out of county?
I, I think we can. They're looking at numbers. Carolyn, did you hear her question? Kim's question about can we, can we ask Brad next year when he submits his budget request that he line items?
Because I don't think he put it in his budget because it's come out of a different budget. But because of that, it kind of, it wasn't as transparent. Like it could have been, not to no fault of anyone's.
And I'm almost thinking like, we need to line item this expense in his budget this year too, like let's add a line to his budget that is this expense. I don't know what I did, Scott. Really doesn't like me. Um, then, we, if we want to transfer money from the Riverboat to general fund to cover it, we can do that, but like, I want to...
Procedure though, we're on the eleventh hour with the twenty-sixth budget. Is it shifting buckets right now? And that would change the rea-, would that change the reading?
I mean, we can use that into the general fund budget.
Yeah. But it can hit the general fund budget, and it's under his line items in the general fund budget.
But as long as we keep it just in general fund and we don't put it on line item, it's going to continue to kind of not be as transparent.
That's why I'd rather have it hit general fund. If we want to move money from Riverboat to general fund, we can do that. But like, I want it to hit general fund so we don't keep playing this shell game.
We had to come back into budgets to discuss all that, so it's been going on for a while.
I, I don't have it, and I, I wasn't prepared for this discussion. If I recall correctly, this will make, mean that your general fund budget will be in excess of your general fund twenty-twenty-six revenue.
Yes.
That will be fine, because you have plenty of reserves in your general fund as of right now.
So we don't need to be transferring any money as of...
So you wouldn't have to, in my opinion, off the top of my head.
Well, the thing is this, what bucket it comes from, whether it's the Riverboat or the general fund, it's irrelevant. We're funding four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to pay for the medical insurance twenty-twenty-six.
Go ahead, they're trying to talk illegal stuff.
And, and I agree with Kim, it's a good idea that we noted separate in his budget. However, I still don't want to lose track. We're going to have to do that for the budget of twenty-twenty-six. And there are two things that happen from now on. One, no open jobs will be filled.
Let's, let's get one obstacle ton first. Say we're going to fund it then if you want some...
Some teeth in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And let me say something else. Myself, I have been in this council for at least three years, two of which Mark was also in it, where we did not have enough money to fill the budget, and we had to make cuts of over two million dollars. And this is back the time when Barb used to be the auditor. It was not a pleasant, and we spent hours trying to figure out how we were going to cut the different departments in order to be within the budget. And part of that was that we had to allocate five million dollars to the medical fund to be able to maintain that fund solding. So I am, to me, that's a number one priority, that we need to keep that fund healthy. And, and that's why I'm, I'm supportive, so I'm proposing that we do that.
Madam Chair, may I, I had a conversation with our good auditor. Procedurally, it might be in your best interest, because there are certain timeframes that are ticking in terms of your adoption, to entertain a motion to amend your second reading reflecting some of your thinking and consensus here. Vote on that amendment, and then if it passes, obviously, vote on the amended budget.
Perfect.
On the second reading. Is that fair, Madam Auditor?
Yes, that's fair.
Thank you. I, I move then to...
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
Before, before we vote on anything?
Yeah.
Can you share that that I emailed you? So as I was preparing for this meeting, and I looked at the Form Four, and I looked at what we advertised, et cetera. And we can make this change. I mean, we're fine, because we advertise high enough in general fund, that we can make this change. And, and we won't be like breaking any rules that we didn't advertise high enough or whatever. I want to point out, though, that, and I talked to Jenny about it earlier, our tax rates are going up by eight-point-six percent.
Our property tax rates or our?
Our property tax rates. And that's...
Next year?
Yeah.
After, and then they're going to go down?
The rate or the amount we're bringing in because of assess? Okay.
A rate. I don't know why that did that, because it was odd when I did it.
That does make sense.
So, I mean, I just, and obviously, I did this pretty fast, and so I didn't make it real beautiful. And so you can see the difference in the different line items. And I was like, this doesn't make any sense, because our levy went up four percent.
Right.
And we took out the debt.
Right. So why is our tax rate going up? This doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make, it, at, at first blush, it doesn't make sense. So as you see, our, I mean, this is just, it's, this is math.
Right.
So our certified net assessed value, which is that six-point-three-eight-three billion or the six-three-one-one.
So we're up seventy-two million.
Yeah, so we're only up one-point-one percent in total on our, on our net assessed value. See where I'm going?
I do, because this is how we do math.
So when, yeah, because this is how we do math. So our, our amount that we're able to bill went up by four percent. The amount that we are billing only went up one percent. There's a disconnect there.
So the rate had to go up.
So the rate went up.
To meet the levy.
Yes, it's math. But why did this happen? Why, why is this? Well, we're just getting our heads wrapped around all the stuff that happened with SCA one.
Lovely.
It really started before then.
Yes, it started before then with some and and there and so like And Jenny, you want to talk about what we talked about this morning or
Come to the microphone.
Not this morning, what we talked about twenty minutes ago.
Can hear you.
It really started with the Schiffer case and the homestead. For twenty five pay twenty six, we had to move most of the residential excess buildings From a three percent cap to a one percent cap. So that's the biggest reason that the assessment didn't go up at the gross assess net assessment didn't go up.
So what had to be which houses had to be moved from the three percent to the one percent?
Excess residential, things like boat houses, garage extra garages, pole barns on residential parcels. Those were all considered in the Schiffer case to be under cap one. So we had them all capped as cap three.
You were right, like that's how my property tax bill reads, yeah.
So when you move those, we had a a four point one percent increase overall increase in EV. That's how much it went up in twenty five, twenty four it went up seven point eight percent, twenty three seven point nine percent. So when you only increased because the the house prices didn't increase as much.
Right.
And we didn't have as much new construction.
And then we moved
Then you move the the AV out of that three percent cap into the one, so you're not getting as much into your tax rate.
That's
When the the rate On top of all the homesteads and everything, all the other exemptions that were taken out of it.
Help me out there on this thing, you're saying that the rate is going up with us making any changes to that?
Yeah.
Just to meet the levy, the four percent levy increase. Yeah, we have to do a four percent levy increase, so to meet that, we have to raise the rate eight point six because our EV only went up one point one.
So so does this mean that we're taking forty one cent tax rate times our net assessed value? To generate twenty six million dollars in revenue taxes? And last year, we took our thirty seven cent rate at at that Six billion number to generate twenty three million in taxes, so we're actually Our our tax theoretical tax collection is two point three million dollars more?
So we are getting via property tax more than enough to cover?
This now, this is not for the total budget, this is just for the amount of the budget that is generated by property revenues.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
So so the property revenue tax is going up by two point three million dollars.
Yes.
And our overall budget is going up by how much year over year? Do we have that?
Uh it's in there. I saw this number somewhere.
I don't I don't know if I have that.
So part of that is also income tax revenue.
Part of the differential year over year, so so this actual This portion of the tax revenue is it going up nine point eight five percent when you do the math? The two million three on the twenty three million dollars Of this past year.
Okay, so last year, second reading. Sorry, I want to make sure I'm reading the right number. That's the number I've got in front of me. This is I'm reading the wrong one, hold on.
So when I look at Cumulative budget from in our month end reports From August twenty eighth to twenty five, we've got the budgets in there by all the departments. It's got the two thousand twenty five adopted budget has seventy one million nine oh two. And the twenty six requested at that point in time of seventy million, but now we've got a new number sixty eight sixty eight million. So that differential is about three point seven million dollars lower.
So when you look at the general fund for last year, I pulled up our twenty Twenty five budget that we approved on ten twelve twenty four. That was thirty eight million four nineteen coming out of general and this is county general thirty eight nine thirty four. So
Is that including the four fifty?
No, that does not include the four fifty, so if you add four fifty to that, that would be Thirty nine Four, three, three, yeah, three. Thirty nine, three, eight, four. Yeah, five fifty four. So This is where like what it was our projected revenue for general fund when we started this process in August. Based on Interest. Where can I find that number?
It's on one of your budget work sheets.
Okay.
Which one would do we go to for budget?
Uh go to twenty six budget hearings and it'll be in there.
Are you looking at cumulative? What is the most recent updated, there's one that says updated eight six, that would be old.
But that's where we could still see projected income because the levy was still four percent. I felt like there was a is a summary workbook?
Delian's pulling it up.
Thank you.
Or she's trying to.
Okay, yeah, there's a revenue tab. Yeah.
Now I I just want to make sure I understand that That revenue shown on your screen there is going up two point three million dollars.
We originally had proposed having to transfer funds from reserves to cover part of the budget rate.
For the for this coming year?
For twenty six.
Twenty six.
So we We're saying we don't need to do that.
I don't think we'll need to transfer.
Okay.
But that's why I'm like
Okay, so I go back to the So where are we then now? Uh counselor, do we need to make
Amendment, make an amendment for four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the twenty twenty six budget?
Right, yeah.
I'd make an amendment, I'd do an amendment first and then
Yep.
So approve the amendment if you have a vote and then has amended, approve the budget, right?
Okay, help me out on this thing, I move to Amend the amendment.
Nope.
Amend
Amend the second reading.
The second reading to reflect that four hundred fifty thousand dollars from the health budget, no.
From the commissioners.
From the commissioners office to the general fund to be in Brad Barnes.
Court services budget.
Services budget.
I'll second that amendment.
I see, watch your Watch your watch your motion there, I think you just I think you just motioned to take it out of the commissioner's budget, put it in Brad's budget.
To not charge four hundred fifty thousand to your budget, but to line item four hundred fifty thousand in Brad's Budget to cover his health costs.
That's the motion that you need to make.
That's why we have That's what we have in the in the amendment right now.
Okay.
Don't don't subtract four fifty from the commissioners, we were just gonna make them eat it in the health fund. We're adding four fifty. Delian shaking her head.
You got it.
Thank you, Tony.
All right, thank you.
I understand.
We'll make sure that the motion sounds
Yeah.
Appropriate in the minutes.
Okay. So George has moved, Mark has seconded to put a four hundred fifty thousand dollar line item in the general fund under the court services
Medical.
Medical line item.
Correct.
Any other questions, corrections, discussion, questions from the audience? Y'all with me? What's your question?
Can we go back to the the property taxes here because I'm just looking the so the overall budget cost for twenty twenty six Was sitting at
Cole, can you come up and say your name and ask a question so everyone can hear you?
Yeah, yeah. My name's Cole Bennett, I live on the north side of Columbus and I'm a little confused.
Perfect, ask away, you might not be alone.
I know, I know I'm not alone. So twenty twenty six, the budget sits, the new budget is sitting at seventy point one million dollars total.
Okay. No.
Okay.
That's what we advertised, yeah.
That was a decrease from seventy one point eight in twenty twenty five. But there was an increase in the in the state levy four percent.
Yep.
And so now so now our property tax rate for our property tax rate is increasing eight percent.
Yes.
Because of the lost revenue.
From the assessed value.
Of excessive excessive residential buildings.
Yes.
Okay. So how what was cut down from the budget then to make it decrease?
So What state that question again? What was decreased from the budget or what was decreased from revenue?
What was decreased from the budget from last year to this year? Because our property taxes are going up to meet that levy.
So there's more, yeah, there's lots of things that have changed, so like
With a couple of lost positions that we didn't find, it's centered on what was
Parks Department bought the truck last year, not this year, so like We could probably line item, but like there were some big purchases, we're not doing a playground this year with the Parks Department we did last year. What are some other big items?
Eight hundred eight eight hundred thousand dollars for the salt barn.
Yes, we also had budgeted like a million dollars in the county council for consultants.
Like a holding.
And we took nine hundred thousand of that away.
Okay, I get the idea and then the four hundred fifty thousand dollars that you guys are adding on
Yes.
Budget now is for the health fund.
Not the health, we should, it's for the health insurance to fund health insurance for the court services employees.
Like community corrections?
Yes, yes, correct, great question.
Thank you for your time.
No, thanks for asking questions.
It's not a new expense.
No, it's not a new expense, we've just been sort of shuffling that expense around and now we're gonna own it where it belongs.
You got a motion to start?
Motion's been on the table, any other questions? All those in favor of passing the amendment of four hundred fifty thousand added to the general fund line item under court services, signify by saying aye or raising your thumb?
Aye.
Aye. Move all all those opposed, same as sign? Motion, the the amendment passes.
Thank you, counsel.
So with so with that change Our new second reading
Yes.
Will be for general fund Will be thirty nine million three hundred eighty four thousand five hundred fifty four dollars. If I can add two numbers right.
Yes.
And the total budget then Will be sixty eight million six hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
Yes.
Again, if I can add two numbers.
I got the same numbers, so
Excellent, it's gotta be right then.
So the second motion would be to move to adopt the twenty twenty six budget.
As amended.
Correct me if I'm wrong, do I need to go to thirty eight million or sixty eight million?
Both.
Both.
Okay, to reflect the budget to be thirty eight million three hundred eighty four dollars and five hundred fifty four dollars?
Thirty nine.
For a total of
Thirty nine, three eighty one.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty nine for a total of sixty eight million six hundred ninety seven dollars and nine hundred and four dollars.
Yes.
Correct.
Well amended.
Yeah, with the amendment as amended.
Yes, as amended.
Okay. George has moved, Mark has seconded, any discussion? Any questions from the audience?
What is the um difference then on our, I mean, obviously, we're gonna be in a little bit in a deficit, is it around Two hundred thousand or what is that number?
I don't support any longer in a deficit.
Okay, thank you.
The second piece of
Yeah, we gotta we have any other questions?
So the actual budget is sixty eight million dollars, not not the advertised seventy.
Yes, the actual, we're approving a budget. Yep, did you get that sixty eight million?
Six hundred ninety seven, nine hundred four dollars.
And the amount coming from our general fund, so Bartholomew County residents is thirty nine, three eight four. The rest is coming from federal grants, state grants, fees, user generated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did we vote on that?
No, because he had a question, all right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of The amended Twenty twenty six budget, signify by saying aye or thumbs up? Aye, see the thumbs up, all those opposed, same as sign? The twenty twenty six budget passes. Okay, now we're moving on to the salary ordinance to cover And this is where we discuss what you want to do.
Okay, can I tell you something to George, I know that's what you're trying to accomplish. I think now it'd probably help us to it'd help me to better understand Your operational standpoint because that was the issue I had when we discussed it at the work session. That it potentially can trap their hands uh taking thirty days to come back or six potential sixty days to come back to the council On a critical position where we may pay in overtime. Cutting a nose off to Spiderface by by saying that, you know, we want to reduce your workforce, but full well knowing That they may have to do that, I would like to at least a couple of us sit down with them And see if that's even feasible for them to come back. How it will uh I know I have to reflect myself back for a twenty four Seven operation, uh if I would lose an employee And I I gotta start scurrying to get overtime for sixty days to fill that spot, to come back, to ask us to fill it. Then it may be another thirty days where it gets hard, so and it's a critical place. I would like to understand that better how better before we would even strap them with that.
But Mark, they have more employees that are doing other functions That could be utilized to replace people in the correctional office. And what I'm suggesting is that What I'm suggesting is that henceforth Any open position that exists now is not to be filled. And in twenty twenty six, any position that becomes open is not filled. And in twenty twenty four, we will not We will not fund anything else that grants cannot cover.
What's our turnover rate, that do you guys know, Holliger's office? I mean, if you say no employees and all of a sudden they lose ten employees because it's a work bad working condition, what are we gonna do, we're gonna shut down the place?
No, not the correctional, the correctional The correctional area should not be closed down, but they have other people that works In in that department that can be put in the correctional office. And if it comes down to that point and then they can come to us and then we can revise revise the system.
Wouldn't we be setting a precedent that we're gonna do that in all different departments?
Say that again, Greg.
Wouldn't we be setting a precedent that we're gonna have the capability to do that in all different departments?
We we can, as far as I'm concerned, we can
I don't want to micromanage though.
Understand. The thing, the thing, Mark, the thing, Greg, is that for the last fifteen years since I've been in this council and it happened prior to that. I think there is even greater history with Barb. You know, that the correctional department who has depended on on grant money, they have been playing The shuffle game of putting people from the correction office to the grant office and all that kind of stuff in order Because there was not enough money and it was confusing as hell. We would not, we were not able to understand when it came down to budget, we were not able to understand Who was being paid, matter of fact, at one point in time, Barb, correct me if I'm wrong. We had Brad Barnes in one budget that was paid by grants and then we had him put him in the general fund. And we played that game back and forth because there was money in one area but not in the other, was that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I hear what you're saying, it's a slippery slope to go and
I understand, but this is the only department who has been playing That we've been having problems over the last fifteen, I cannot speak over fifteen years, I'm only speaking of fifteen years. For the last fifteen years, this is the only department, if you notice We had, we had a work session where everybody that had grant money said that they If they lost the grant, they were able to continue the function, so they are managing their their areas correctly. This depart this department has not been managed, has not been managed. You know, and it has been confusing as hell, that's why, that's why I'm proposing.
I hear what you're saying, I understand it.
Yeah.
I I still, I still
And I I hear what you're saying, Mark, and And I, I hear what you're saying, Mark, and. I, I. I'd rather do it the way that I'm proposing.
Without their input than how.
Without their input. Well, our input is that we're not gonna be continuing to fund these jobs.
I told Brad that almost morning, I said that funding may not be there next year, period.
Well, and then I'm, I'm saying that as a council, it's, it's not just you, as a council, we tell Brad that we're not funding anymore. That is not able to be paid by the grants.
So are we saying he can hire as long as it's covered one hundred percent by grants?
There's two different things to talk about.
And if it's not covered one whole, one hundred percent by grants.
The thing is this, I'd rather, I'd rather have reduction in workforce by attrition than by a layoff.
My concern is, is the ripple effect, because if they're not going through court services, then they're gonna be sitting in the jail.
And then it's gonna bend. Over there immensely, and, and even thirty to sixty days, let's just say they don't have a position to fill in their community corrections. Guess what, the judge is not gonna send somebody over to it, they're gonna send it right to his place. And we're, we're going down that slippery slope. I don't, I, I agree with the premise is, we don't have the money to do it.
How do you propose that?
I propose we get some input from them and work with them, bring them in a work session. Say this is what we're thinking, help us work with, with us on that.
Okay, that's fine, we, we can do it that way, as far as I'm concerned, I would be supportive of that. However, I would like to, I would like for the council, as a council, to say in twenty twenty-seven, we will not be funding. Any position that is not covered totally by the grant.
Including benefits.
Including benefits.
I think that's the slope, is because.
Including benefits.
They're saying they have a three.
And that way, and that way, they know that they have one year to manage correctly. Because if not, we'll be sitting, and, and this is what has happened in the last fifteen years. We have, we have had in the ordinance. In the salary ordinance for fifteen years, to my knowledge, if not more. When the grant goes away and cannot pay the whole, the whole amount, that job goes away. And yet somehow, somewhere, we have manipulated for the same reasons that we're talking about here. We are afraid to manage the system, but somewhere in here, the council needs to, we need to be responsible, financially prudent. And, and the thing about, well, it's even worse. Look, we had, we had three hundred thousand dollars last, last, but we had. Two hundred thousand dollars this year that we had to pay. We had, we were expecting to have two hundred, three hundred thousand a year in nine, in nine-one-one for equipment. I mean, the, if we're not careful, and I, I have seen it happen. You blink eye and that money goes away and we have nothing. At that time when we have the list that is coming in, we have all sorts of consulting fees that are gonna be popping up on us and all that kinda stuff. So somewhere, this is the time now to be prudently, fiscally prudent.
I, I concur what you're saying, I'm part of it, George, but there's a. I've witnessed, uh, for years, uh, the community corrections getting state grants and everything else. That's funded the majority of those programs. If a lot of those programs go away, we're gonna fill our jail. And it's gonna cost us more, we're shifting the burden, what's happening right now, some of the grant monies are going away. Cause Bron and the state legislators are putting the squeeze back on us, cause they've been paying a lot for local counties to do this. And what's happening now, we're feeling, we're feeling bad. We're picking up some of the slack that we've been paying for, that the state's been paying for years. And I know that millions has been sent over there by the state, they're pulling the reins in a little bit, we're balking a little bit. But what's gonna happen, that either we, we're in the game or not, and we'll fill the jail, we're gonna fill something else up. Just what we're doing when we're looking at the wheel tax and we're considering bill one, shifting the burden from the state to us, we're feeling it. But I don't want to cut our nose off the spider face by strapping their hands, so we know what that total ripple effect.
And I don't want, the state is sending it to us and I don't think that we want to send it to our, to our constituents. And pay more taxes for, for doing that, and that's what I'm hitting.
Do we know what the cost difference between having somebody go through community corrections versus going through the jail?
John, do you know any of that?
No, I don't, I don't know what it costs.
That would be a good point, that, that would be worth us finding out, because then that really adds the value between the two.
Just like when Pastor Tyke was in, what, two weeks ago for Bridge to Dove? Talked about how many of those women were not going to go through the jail, they were gonna go through the, the housing, so each one of those was like seventy thousand each, is that right? Yeah, eighty dollars a day, so, I mean, the dollars.
The educational part on us to know, cause they're, and I won't be fair to Brad too, cause it, it's confusing. When you're managing that many people, if I can get a partial grant and another thing, and pay for this, it's a hybrid position now. Cause he's looking for funding out there, I don't know every one of the employees, how he's did it. He has moved a lot of people, one budget to another, to cover without coming here. That's an educational thing, we all need to do, in the budget thing with them, if we're gonna tell them not to hire somebody or fill positions, we need to know how that's gonna affect. The jail, everything else that's going on. I don't, I, I can't go on board by saying, no, not, not filling any position without, before they come forward, we're micromanaging that. I don't wanna be in that position.
So the.
And then what do you propose, so that we are not in the same position a year from now when we start talking for the twenty twenty-seven budget?
The senate bill nails us. I'm here, the senate bill, that hurts us that bad, we may be in that position by saying. You're forced right now to lay these people, we can't afford.
I mean, we, we.
We may be, we may be in that boat, George, I can't say we will or won't be, we may be faced, there's gonna be some tough, tough choices for us.
Okay, so, okay. I hear what you're saying, and you have good points, don't misunderstand me. However, we need to make sure that Brad understands that for twenty twenty-seven. We will not fund anything that is not paid by the grants in total.
In total, and I think that's the kicker, because maybe the grants have been paid for salaries but not benefits or whatever, so.
It's hard for me to go down that slope, because if I'm getting, paying a hundred percent on their salaries and everything else, and I'm gonna pay ten thousand or thirty thousand in medical. And I'm getting all these community benefits and keeping them out of jail, I don't know, I can't sit here and say today that I'm gonna do that. Cause it may be a better thing for me to pay that twenty thousand dollars to keep them out of jail.
Right, so, so at eighty dollars a day, it costs about thirty thousand dollars a year to put someone for a whole year. Alright, thirty thousand over the four hundred and fifty thousand is fifteen people. So can court services, they're gonna handle more than fifteen people. Alright, so I mean, it, from, if, if we were to transfer. Only fifteen people from court services to the jail, it's a wash. But it's probably more along lines of three hundred people.
And they make, they actually charge him to be on the work, even in there, in and out, that goes into a fund too that offsets other costs. There's a lot of moving parts on there.
No matter how you look at it though, our society is getting worse. And we're gonna be having more people that are gonna be doing, so either they go to jail or they go to the correctional office, which is almost like being in jail.
And we've had the three hundred people in jail this year already, I know we're down a little bit, cause I just kinda like looking at those numbers. And, I wish, it's weird.
Sounds like a pirate sheriff, yeah.
But I know the same way there, and that's a capacity, and you know, there's a lot, lot to think about. I just don't wanna jump on this yet, so. Marcus, you're off a plot, let's.
He could be loading your upload.
Yeah.
Are you talking to me?
I can't.
I've been listening. Um. My thoughts are similar to Mark's. And, uh, I think that we have to be cautious not to, you know, take an opportunity to help in another area, so. Mark, you can make it a motion, I suppose.
I was just, I, we were, George was talking that, right now, we're just trying to figure out what to do before we made a motion.
I mean, I, I do like the concept of working with court services to figure out.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all.
And I don't really have a problem with. I don't, I don't know about freezing everything. Because if something happens and he loses fifteen people, well then, then they can't operate at all.
I don't have a problem at all, my problem is that I don't wanna be in this same argument or conversation. Next year, when we're doing twenty twenty-seven.
I heard.
Because there's nothing there that says that they, they have not, they, in the last fifteen years, they haven't had enough money in the grants to pay for the entire cost.
Right.
For the, so we're gonna be in the same order we will be out today.
That's where we need Brad or the judges in here explaining that the state has been putting the squeeze on them, it's worth feeling it. And are we gonna live with it? Or we not, let's let them influence us in what's.
And I think, we need to figure out, what is the cost if we keep them and we pay for this versus if we. Don't have this court service option, we send them to jail, because we're gonna, we're gonna have to pay. For these folks one way or another.
But by having a separate line item, it makes it a more transparent number, and then we are making a conscientious decision every time we look at that budget.
I agree with you.
And then, so I think that will help.
Okay, so in the salary ordinance, it currently says with vacancies, prior to filling any. Open employment position in the county, the department head seeking to fill the position shall notify the auditor's office of the vacancy. And the department heads intention to fill said vacancy, the auditor shall then promptly notify the members of the county council, giving the council. An opportunity to provide input prior to the vacancy being filled. The only departments exempt are youth service center, E nine-one-one, sheriff, jail, and emergency management. Do we want to order, uh, do we want to add court services?
Yes. In my opinion, yes, I mean, for them, for them to, no, wait, I want them to be able to operate, I don't want them to ask, no, they may, I can fill the position.
You want them to be ex.
Exempt from doing that, so they can do that for now. Now, if we get in and do a work session, be sure we need to do something different, we can come back in a minute.
For next year, for next year, Mark, what you're saying is, that if they don't have enough money in the grant to pay for all the costs of that grant. That we are gonna continue paying the excess?
I don't know what I'm gonna do next year at this time, this, I'm gonna have to hear what the state's paying and what's best for the community and not. Cause a ripple effect in other offices.
Based on what he gave us on his grants and his headcount, I think from a salary perspective, he's got enough to cover the salaries for next year. He's, he's mapped that out.
Correct, but he doesn't have enough money, and here we're talking about, well, at first, I thought we were talking about a handful of people. It became twenty-three people, it, which equates four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And we may not fully understand what his grants say, they may just cover salaries only. So just having a better understanding and some education will go a long way.
We got too many unanswered questions for me to even make a decision. But I do not want that started in the first year.
I predict that we will be in the same position at this time for twenty twenty-seven. Until we say, until we say that if there's not enough money for the entire grant to pay all the costs. That we will be in the same position again, that we may end up getting coming up with another four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for the, for that medical. That's my prediction, because I have seen in the last fifteen years, we've been playing around with this subject. Every single year we have played, we, we have been playing the shuffle and hiding things around and, and every year it comes out. And some years, the commissioners paid out of their budget, the medical insurance, they cannot continue to do that, to be able to maintain the health insurers healthy. So therefore, in order to maintain that health insurers healthy, we, we end up having to pay out of pocket from another, from another pocket. That's all I'm saying.
So he has thirty-four employees on grants and we're paying.
They have.
Twenty-three of their.
We have a total of sixty-four, they have half of the employees in grants. And we have heard the other half, that they, if they lose their grant, they will be able to maintain their work by reshuffling work and all that kinda stuff. So they are managing the people, matter of fact, I believe that it was Amanda Organis who came in with a plan, very well laid out. Of how she was gonna cover that person that she has that is in the grant, so if that grant goes away, she has, she is already programming on how that work is gonna get done.
Okay, so approval? Okay, Pete.
He's been wordsmithing.
So in the salary ordinance, we wanna add court services, do I need to have an amendment to add that?
Yes, you do.
Or?
So.
Is there a difference, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, this is obviously a policy decision, my question was whether or not there was consensus of the council to have a discussion. Uh, as Marcus is suggesting, and maybe as the council memorallist has indicated, would be acceptable, is that right? With this court services?
I, I don't have a problem in putting court services, I, I said an exception, but we will be in the same boat. A year from now, you know, unless, unless we start doing something about it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, the reality is, is we could be in a tougher boat, because if grants go away, then we will have other decisions.
At a time that we don't really know how this is gonna operate against the general fund.
Right.
Right. So maybe a motion with acceptance, with the understanding that there would be that conversation that would commence with court services. Over the period of the next sixty, ninety days, to fact find on the issue, to determine which your plan will be moving forward in your next.
I would prefer, I would prefer that we do not amend the salary ordinance and instead have those conversations with. Community services to see how they're gonna manage.
That, that's, I think the sense I was getting that there would be that kinda discussion moving forward with an approval. Is that, is that fair or not, did I miss something? I'm totally confused. I personally, I don't wanna strap their hands until we know operational wise how it affects.
And we're not.
Do we need to do a salary amendment?
We need to.
Add it to them, so that's.
We need to do an amendment if we're gonna exempt them from having to get approval.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and amend the twenty twenty-six salary ordinance to add them on to that list.
Of exemptions.
Right. Then, I'll follow up that we have a revol.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Greg has second.
Unless we repeat it also.
Greg has seconded the amendment to add court services as the, um, exempted department, any other discussion? All those in favor of passing the amendment by adding court services as an exempted department, signify by saying aye or raising your thumb?
Aye.
All those opposed, same as sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, now, we need to, we need a motion to approve the salary ordinance as amended.
I approve, I move to approve the salary ordinance as amendment.
Alright, and Mark, you second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended salary ordinance, signify by saying aye or raising your thumb?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Solid thumbs, salary ordinance passes.
Can I go ahead and let, and follow up with this?
Yes.
Uh, I will try to coordinate if it's, it's alright with the council, to get with the judges and Brad and his staff. To come into a work session early January, and then if we need to amend a motion after we learn things. That we can go ahead and do that for twenty twenty-six, to, uh, if we have to start doing something. Proactively with them, that we're fully aware of the ripple effect with other offices. And be more educated on our part. How their operation is and their, their funding cycle, and what, like, we learned at eleventh hour, they got a hundred and thirty-nine thousand right at budget time, there's. Very well, they said the state wasn't gonna give them that much money.
Yeah.
We need to know that process, or I need to know that process a little bit better going into twenty seven budget.
Okay, perfect. Alright, the final thing is really financial, so they obviously presented last week. I think moving forward, we do have a line item for consulting, I can work with a proposal from them, but just wanted to see. Discussion wise, do we wanna move forward with them, I know, Pia, you went and spent some time with them crunching numbers.
I did, I visited their offices in Seymour last week one day, I was down there for two hours. Geeking out over a huge spreadsheet, it is a six gigabyte file. Um, it's one that you, if you make a change and you hit calculate, you might need to go get a cup of coffee or go for lunch. Um, it was, so we talked about some of the concerns I had, we did do a change in some of the modeling. Um, cause I thought that the projections that they had. Um, cause I thought that the projections that they had were too high, and I think I made the comment in the meeting.
Yeah.
Work session that they said, well, we got that from the state, and I go, it's not legal in this state, but I don't know what they're smoking. Um, they didn't like that comment, um, and so it was good, it was really good. They, they seemed to really have their heads wrapped around what's going on, and I think it's something that will definitely benefit council going forward. To be able to use that parcel level modeling and then bring it up to a higher level. To be able to understand where we're gonna be going forward. And also as then you get into how you need to break down and manage some of the lit numbers to add that piece on, so.
Are they going to go to the next level and give us guidance as far as how much? I mean, we have a lot of leeway in what we can do, is that the next?
I think that's what we're discussing.
Yeah.
We, I mean, that personally, I like.
That's what I would like to do, I wanna make sure that's what everybody else.
Hire them, I want, that's the next level, I wanted to get to us and before we get to budget process next year.
Yeah.
So what do you figure out it's gonna take to make the townships whole, what we need to do and how do we?
Well, and even predicting, how much overage are we comfortable doing, because our revenues are gonna fall next year? So how much over are we willing to go?
Right, so I would like the hard number of what we're actually gonna get. And then back into it with our number and see kind of scenario A B C, if we're moving on option A B C.
What do you mean hard number of what we're gonna get?
Based on?
We're still gonna get some money, it's not all a hundred percent coming, but they've changed it so much, we need to understand.
What we're controlling.
Based on those new rates are, based off of values and everything else, what that actual hard number is.
You have more control over how much we tax.
Right, but we also don't wanna tax more than what we need to.
No, no.
So what I'm saying is, is like, what number, because we know what we've gotten in the past, we have no idea what that looks like, we know what the adjustments are, but based off of values and all of that.
Right, and how much will we?
I don't care for dollar amounts, like, I know what they've said in terms of percentages, but then what does that all boil down to from a dollar perspective? And then based on that, what we back the number into.
So meaning do we have to target like seventy million?
Right.
Seventy two million next year, whatever.
Right.
Well, money spent without moving forward, I think so.
Okay, I'll work on a proposal for twenty twenty six.
I also think.
We have nothing or consulting for us.
Yeah.
I think the townships were appreciative of the ones that came in, several people made a comment that they were glad we were addressing it now.
So they had time?
Yeah, because we're basically giving them eight months, we'll be.
Well, actually, we're giving them more like eighteen months, because this goes into effect in twenty eight fiscal year, so twenty seven. We have two years of like, the twenty six is gonna be a slight dip, like, that's why our rates are going up, and then we're gonna have another one in twenty seven, and then in twenty eight.
Right.
That's when the lit changes go. Did I get that right?
But what the wheel tax also, that also?
Yeah.
We cannot continue to fund the wheel tax or not doing the wheel tax, or will?
No, I think the lit will be enough that we won't have to do a wheel tax.
Yeah. It's just all modeling, I mean, it's, it's, it's having assumptions and doing the models, I mean, but really it's not gonna be able to tell you, you know, which way you need to go.
They're just gonna.
They, they can, they can just help you with the modeling.
Right.
Um, this, okay, if you want to do a one percent, you know, income tax.
This is what it looks like.
This is what it looks like.
Yeah.
And this is what's gonna happen with your property taxes, I mean, and like I said earlier, when we talked about the certified net assessed value. I mean, Jenny says the gross value went up a lot more than that. Well, I'm like, yeah, that's how you did it.
Right.
Well, it's because, as we said earlier, because of shifts.
Yeah.
So we need to be able to understand where these shifts are and where the money is and, you know, where the bodies are buried. And you need somebody like a consultant, a consulting from who's that? I, I don't have the computing capacity. Here at the county to be able to do that.
You might shut down the.
Could I do it? Maybe. I might have the ability. But I don't have the computing capacity to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't even have a current version of it yet. So.
When you're talking about like the, like a roadmap for them for uh, over the next eighteen months, what they would lay out for us. Uh, a proper time to digest and understand, because there is gonna be some state changing things.
Well, they're just gonna, let's just be honest, they're gonna change something.
Eighteen month plan for us to be educated.
Yeah.
I need them to do three, five, seven year forecasting on the tax side of it.
And I feel like, I mean, they're connected enough with the budget spiders, that they, the ones that are writing it, the ones that are doing it, they know them and they talk to them.
But they're gonna need some assumptions.
Yeah, they need more, more local accurate assumptions that you're.
Because some of it that, that I was calling them out on in the work session, when we talked about it, they're like, oh, okay. Now we see where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Now this makes more sense.
Yeah.
So it's a conversation, that's good.
It was, it was, it was, it was.
A working conversation.
Two hours of, you know, quality time.
Good.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Alright, any other items of business we need to cover before we adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Well, I have a question first, you had said, I think during budgets or maybe last month. That you were wanting to get as much business on our November meeting instead of have a December meeting, so I wanna confirm. I can send something out to department heads asking.
Let's wrap everything up in November.
About your, your November.
How we feel about that? I mean, obviously, if life happens, life happens. Yeah, I'd say let's do that.
And what's on a work session? Somebody was asked.
I was, I was gonna try to do the work session after first year, the cold months, breaking in.
Let's wait till January. Okay, thank you.
You can second my motion then.
Mike has seconded.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
I've got lots of.